The Monday, October 2nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier? Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Present.
Counsel Hardern?
Present.
Counsel Heath?
Present.
Counsel LaMach?
Present.
Counsel Tison?
Yes, present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuzinskas?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us towards the attainment of city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted as duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A Subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are no reading of the minutes of prior meetings. There are no public hearings. At this time, I'm going to take item number 11051, which is on page two of our agenda, Item 11051, Appointments Committee, A Measure Confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Elijah Williams to the Position of Police Officer, Permanent. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor, the appointee, and chief Maggaveen on the appointment. Officer Williams is a graduate of the Mass. Police Academy. He has been in field training, and the chief reported that he's been a great addition to the force. Best of all, the committee was very pleased to hear that Officer Williams is a, Gardner is his home, and he has come back to us, so we're grateful for that. The committee was unanimous in support of the appointment, therefore I move the appointment to be confirmed.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Walsh, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Heath?
I'd just like to go ahead and congratulate Elijah. I know him as Elijah. I've known him for a long time. We actually played football together. One of the, you know, one of the other things that he's done. I know his family, his mother, rest in peace to his father, his sister, and everyone else. And I just want to say I'm very proud of you. All right? That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to do a swearing-in for those who've been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time.
I have you ready and repeat after me. I am State Janey.
I am Elijah Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That our bare truth.
That our bare, fair truth.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
You have your questions.
Orders, item 11066, Notification from the Mayor Regarding Certified Free Cash and Retained Earnings. Counsel Ron Cormier?
We've all received notification from the mayor regarding our certified free cash, also how it broke down all the retained earnings, the various enterprise funds that we have. It was noted that much of the work to prepare all of this and do it smoothly was done by our city auditor, John Richard, and everything was one of the earliest times, if not the earliest times, we've had free cash certified, which is a reflection of his work. Finance Committee was very much in favor of receiving this document. And I make a motion, we place it on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, to place notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, through the Finance Committee, or the mayor, there's other, other receivables, and I was kind of curious on what those were for me and the public, for some of the grants or money or other receivables that we are doing. So I wanted to know what RBNEG rec is, what Shannon Grant is, what 2019 BG-19 and 2020 BG-20 is, and hoping that maybe I can get some clarification.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Thank you. The mayor did mention this, and he just came in, maybe he can clarify, but I'm not going to. But some of the grants are held over from the previous year. They're given to us after our financial year has started, so they weren't budgeted, so they fall into free cash. That was the explanation, was part of the explanation, but he has just come in, and I would be glad to turn that question over to him.
Thank you, Counsel. Sorry, I was welcoming a new officer's family. The way that certain grants work, particularly those grants from the federal government, some from the state, but mainly from the federal government, are what's called reimbursement grants. That means when we receive the award, rather than getting the check upfront, we're told to basically submit the receipts up to that amount to them, and then the check comes back as a reimbursement. If that money's not in hand, it's considered a negative balance on our balance sheet until that money comes in. So while we know the money's coming in because we have a signed contract with the federal government and the state government and their respective secretaries, until that money comes in, we have to carry it as a negative balance on our sheet. Therefore, it gets deducted and deferred to next year. That's why, if you notice, that line is called deferred, deferred compensators, or something along those lines on that amount there. The Shannon Grant is listed, that's our drug, our drug and gang prevention grant. The Chapter 90 grant is there because that's a reimbursement for our road repair, different things like that. Once you have the expenses, you submit the receipts, and then they pay you back as a reimbursement type thing. So that's why, until that money's in hand, if that money's not in our city coffers on July 30th at midnight, it has to be deducted from free cash immediately unless we receive it. If we receive it on July 1st, it still is deducted because it's now in the new fiscal year and it's part of the new fiscal year's revenue. So once that fiscal year cuts, anything that hasn't come in, and that's why again, it'll hit us in the next year. So if I've got $50 short on June 30th, and that $50 comes in on July 1st, I know that the next July 1st, I'll get that minimum $50 on free cash the following year.
Just clarification, the BG-19, what is BG?
Block Grant.
Block.
Block Grant, 19.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Boone. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I just want to comment also on, I was first elected to the City Council in January of 1981, and I feel comfortable in saying that this is by far the earliest that we've had certification of free cash, in my experience, that I can recall. And I think it's a tribute to the good work of our city auditor, John Richard, and his staff, and the people associated, working with the mayor's office as well. I think getting the, getting the information available and put in for John Richard makes it easier for him to do the job. So it's not just the auditor, although he's the lion's share of getting it certified, submitted and certified, but all the elements of our municipal government, not the least of which is the mayor, and making sure that the departments are diligent and doing their part of the work. I think we owe great gratitude for all of our city employees who played a role in this because the sooner we get the money, the sooner we can put it to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11067, An Order Appropriating $128,978 From Free Cash to Stabilization. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, the city has adopted a policy a number of years ago to put 5% of free cash into our stabilization account. Without this contribution this evening, our stabilization account will be $3.4 million, a little in excess of that. This is a practice that's recommended by the Department of Revenue. They recommend that we be somewhere between 7% and 10%, where we're fast approaching that. It's a healthy position to be in, it stands us well with the bonding authorities, so I make a motion that we pass, and the Finance Committee was in favor of this, and I make a motion that we pass the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Daryl Lowitz to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
I just want to make clear to those who may not, may be unfamiliar with this, and to the public in large is that although these, this appropriation order, as well as the next several, are the products of a policy, a sound financial management policy that the city has adopted, we are not obligated to appropriate this money. The mayor is obligated, it's recommended, the mayor to follow the policy presents it. Depending on the circumstances that we feel are appropriate and in consideration, we may or may not pass it, or we may pass it in a lower amount. But I just want to make clear that we're not obligated to do it, even though we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas? Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11068, An Order Appropriating $25,796 From Free Cash to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Again, this is a policy that was adopted a number of years ago. In this case, we apply 1% of our free cash towards this. This is for liabilities. If the city were to fail to continue operating, these are items that would be owed to people who are retired and receiving benefits. This is obviously not going to happen in our future, and we put the minimal amount in this one, as required and recommended by bond authorities. And in that case, Finance Committee was favorable, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Daryl Lowitz to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11069, An Order Appropriating $257,956 From Free Cash to Department of Public Works Department Road Reservicing Expense Account. Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a continuation of previous orders that are part of the administrative financial policies that were spoken about. This is a 10% recommendation, it's 10% of certified free cash. Sometimes the mayor does go above that amount, but this year there was additional funding from ARPA of $150,000, as well as there's the portion we get from the state, which is $604,000. He did allude to some of the roads that would get paved. This is all going to be happening next paving season, obviously, with the time here we are now. It would be a lot of the tributary roads around the Uptown Rotary is the plan, at least as of now, for the funding. He did also mention Keys Road is getting paved tomorrow, I'll add that in there as well. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion?
Just a kind of a matter of reflection, even though it does sound like a lot of money, $81.12 is the current cost to pave one square foot, so it doesn't really go, literally doesn't go very far. But we're doing our best and trying to improve. We've done quite a few more miles of road than we've had in the past, so this goes towards it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel LaMach?
I just wanted to ask, I thought the Uptown Rotary Project was going to take a length of time beyond the next fiscal year, so my question is, will this be kept in the stabilization fund until that project is completed? Because I, my understanding, that was going to be a, at least a 12-month project.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Counsel Walsh?
I can tell you that this is an appropriation to the Department of Public Works, not to a stabilization account.
Okay.
And I expect if it isn't used for that purpose by the end of the current fiscal year, it'll be carried over into the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor?
That is correct, Madam President. The Uptown Rotary Project is an 18-month projected project. They've begun the site work in August, so that's what starts the 18-month clock. It can either be carried over into next year, or quite frankly, we have enough streets that if we don't get to that one, it's probably going to be another street that gets paved by it. I can tell you Lower Parker Streets, the next on the priority list, and then followed by that, the Montvale area neighborhood in South Gardner follows that, since we're finishing the entire Keys Road neighborhood in that section of the city this year. But it can be carried over, but if we get to the point, it's probably going to be going towards a different section of the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel LaMach?
I appreciate the clarification, just because during the finance meeting, that those specific streets were named, so I just wanted clarification that it would be used for, if it was going to be used for other projects. But I appreciate the mayor's explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Orders continued. Item 11070, An Order Appropriating $75,000 From Free Cash to Landfill Closure Expenditures. Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As our packet shows, this is something we've been doing for a number of years now. It's a plan for our requirement to monitor, continue to monitor the closed landfill. We're putting away $75,000 every year in order to cover the expenses for that. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? All those, the clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11071, An Order Appropriating $200,000 From Free Cash to Vehicle Stabilization. Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This appropriation is to put $200,000 into the stabilization account. The mayor has been putting money away into this account in the anticipation we're going to need a new ladder truck for the fire department. I believe the amount for that was $1.7 million to $2 million, with a three-year lead time to order those trucks. This amount, I believe, would put the current balance just over $500,000, so we are on our way to putting money aside for this future expense. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11072, An Order Appropriating $90,072.04 From Free Cash to Mayor Unclassified Department of Opioid Professional Services Expenses. Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This money comes from the Attorney General's lawsuit against opioid manufacturers. All of the municipalities receive a certain amount of funding. That funding is required to be used towards opioid prevention, programming, et cetera. This money was not expended last year, therefore it fell to free cash, so the mayor's put forth this appropriation to the mayor's unclassified department for opioid professional services and expenses, which is where it has to go, it has to be used for those type of services. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMach?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Communications, Item 11073, A Notification From the Mayor Regarding Voter Information Packet For the 2023 Ballot Question. Is there a motion? Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Move to place this notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Daryl Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. First question, I guess, is, has this been sent out for printing at this point in time? I don't know if there's any answer.
Mr. Mayor?
It has been sent for digitizing, so it fits the booklet packet, so it's not out for printing yet. There are two typos in the council packet that weren't noticed because of the ordinance deadline to submit things to the city council. Those have been changed, they're with the printer now, edits can still be made up until, I believe, mid-next week.
Thank you. Second question, I really do appreciate all the information and time and effort you put together to outline all the changes that we're proposing, although it's 25 pages worth and can be a daunting task for certainly some of the, myself and other voters. I was curious in whether or not the council supports, maybe upfront, our position that we voted on, trying to put this out to the voters, and our position thinking that these changes, most of us thinking the changes are appropriate, right upfront, maybe it gives the voters a chance to see our position upfront, and I guess I'm kind of open for discussion on that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
I'm not sure if we're allowed to push the direction with this information we're heading, sending out. I think that was made clear by the city solicitor. I could be wrong, but I think we should, well, we're away from doing that, that's all, I think we're.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel LaMach?
I think we're doing the right thing. I mean, it may be daunting, 25 pages, but the citizens who want to take the time, just like we get the booklets from the state and read them, will do so, and if they have any questions about anything they're reading, they can always contact the city clerk or the mayor's office, refer to the clarification. But I give the public and our citizens a lot, a lot of credit, and I think they're capable of reading the booklet on their own, because we are doing the right thing of giving them the information. We would be wrong not to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel LaMach. Further discussion? Counsel Ron Cormier?
And of course, I say, it's public record that nearly, nearly all of us voted to put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Boone?
And that's kind of my point, it's public record, so putting it in one of these pages upfront seems appropriate to me, but that's just me.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Under the ethics laws, we can't advocate one way or the other for a ballot question. Facts such as this led up to this decision can be included, but it cannot work to sway a voter, it has to be just, I think it says it on page one of the packet, that this is meant to, this is not meant to advocate one way or the other, but to educate so that the voter can make their informed decisions. I understand that it's a rather lengthy document, that's why we try to do the quick summaries upfront, and then the detailed redlined track changes in the end. That way, if you don't get to the end, if you want to get to the end, you can, but all the information's right upfront if you need it to, if the summary version of it.
Great. And I do appreciate all the detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to also note that a webpage has been set up under the transparency tab of the city's website, so if folks want to take a look at it too, and, you know, use their search functionality on their browser, that's available to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, reports of standing, committees, Finance Committee, Item 11061, An Order To amend the Code of the City of Gardner by Adding A New Chapter To Be Entitled Chapter 504 Wage Theft Protection, Which Shall Provide For Protections For Workers And Employees Of Contractors Working On City Projects. Counsel Daryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee would request more time on this item.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Appointments Committee, Item 11051, We Entertained At The Beginning Of The Meeting And Voted On. Item 11064, A Measure Confirming The Mayor's Appointments Of Election Officers For 2023, 2024. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor on this item. Confirmation of these elected election officers by the council is required for the upcoming election.
for protections for workers and employees of contractors working on city projects. Counselor Daryl Lautz?
Thank you, Madam President. The finance committee would request more time on this item.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Appointments Committee, item 11051, we entertained at the beginning of the meeting and voted on. Item 11064, a measure confirming the mayor's appointments of election officers for 2023, 2024. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor on this item. Confirmation of these elected election officers by the council is required for the upcoming election. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the confirmation.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Matt to confirm the mayor's appointments. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11065, a measure confirming the police officer assignments to polling locations. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Similar to the previous item, council confirmation is required for the assignment of all officers of the Gardner Police Department as election poll details for the upcoming election. The committee was unanimously in favor of recommendation, therefore I move the confirmation. With confirmation.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Matt to confirm the mayor's assignment, to confirm the police officer assignments. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11065, a measure confirming the police officer assignments to polling locations. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Similar to the previous item, council confirmation is required for the assignment of all officers of the Gardner Police Department as election poll details for the upcoming election. The committee was unanimously in favor of recommendation, therefore I move the confirmation. With confirmation.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Matt to confirm the mayor's assignment, to confirm the police officer assignments. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Service Committee, item 11052, a petition by National Grid Park Street to install one single-owned pole and relocate one single-owned pole on Park Street beginning at a point approximately 100 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Park Street and Vernon Street, and continuing approximately 150 feet in a west direction. Install one single-owned stub pole 12-84 to replace the old stub pole in backyard of apartment. Will remove old stub pole 12-84, relocating P9 and associated guy wires back approximately 10 in accordance with the city's Park Street project. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, the service committee met on this last Friday. We had a public hearing on it at our last meeting. There were no objections or concerns raised at the public hearing. The city engineers provided us with a report indicating that he had no concerns or comments on it. Public Service Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the petition, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Daryl Lautz to approve the petition. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11053, a petition by National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated, Park Street to relocate five jointly-owned poles on Park Street beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Park Street and Lake Street, and continuing approximately 720 feet in a west direction. Moving poles 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and associated anchors back approximately 5 feet for the city's Park Street project. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, the committee met on this item as well. At our last meeting, there was a public hearing in which, and a butter raised concerns about the location of pole number three. Subsequent to that public hearing, the city engineer, a representative from National Grid, and a representative from Ty and Bond met with the concerned citizen and have been able to formulate a new map and a new description of the pole locations that hopefully is in the works now, and in consideration of that committee. So there will likely be a new description of the pole locations, as well as a new map to substitute for what we have here today. So in light of that, committee requests more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Safety Committee, item 11044, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 306, thereof entitled Alcoholic Beverages, to add a new Section 5 thereof entitled Marijuana Retail Establishments, to increase the quota allowed and change the method for amending the quota allowed by the code of the city of Gardner. Counselor Tisoni?
Yes, Madam President. As we're still waiting for a report back from the planning board, the safety committee would like to request more time on this one.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 11045, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675, thereof entitled Zoning, to amend Section 1070 thereof entitled Marijuana Establishments, to change the method to increase the quota allowed by the code of the city of Gardner. Counselor Heath?
Yes, I would like to put a motion to withdraw. This, I, when I submitted it, there is not enough time for me to go ahead and sit down and have the conversation and get the information to the planning board. So I think it's like 65 days, so if we push it off, it wouldn't be enough time to go ahead and actually look at this item, so I would like to go ahead and withdraw it with the intention to bring it back in the future, at a future time.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor Tyros to withdraw the item. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11046, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled Zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Counselor Heath?
Just like the last one, I'd like to go ahead and put a motion to withdraw, basically for the same exact thing that I just said. I just need more time to get the information that they're requesting over to him.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor Tyros to withdraw the item. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11060 was amended and removed earlier. It was a communication from Counselor George Tyros regarding review of the city's disaster response plans. We had voted previously to refer to committee the whole and then scheduled an informal meeting to get a presentation from the mayor, and I do anticipate that we will have that whole meeting scheduled before our next regular meeting. Moving on to new business, there is no new business. Council comments and remarks. Counselor Matt?
I just want to do a public service announcement for the Gardner CAC. Our Community Action Committee does a lot for our community, for our families, especially coming up towards the holiday season. They are having a comedy show this Friday night at the PACC for adults only, 18 years and older. It's $25 a ticket. I believe the show starts at 8:00 and doors open around 7:00. They're still looking to sell tickets. They're available on the CAC website, they're on, information's on the sandwich boards around the city, or looking for sponsors. Even if you can't attend, by buying a ticket, you're still supporting this great cause. So I just wanted to let people know that that fundraiser is taking place, and if you have any questions, you can contact Julie Mahan at the CAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tisoni?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind the residents that this week is yard waste pickup week from October 3rd to October 6th, and so if you have yard waste, let's give it out.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments and remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Counselor Mac, for reminding me about the comedy show. I just want to go off what you said, I mean, it was hilarious the last time we went. I'm not going to confirm or deny that I might have been part of the laughter that last one, so I definitely plan on going there again. And the way that this world has been, very uptight, and, you know, I think we all need a laughter right now, so I would definitely suggest for people to go to the CAC this weekend, to go ahead and get a nice laugh. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks? Counselor Walsh?
I can't go without commenting that I received the news earlier today, the filing by Haywood Hospital of Chapter 11 protection in the bankruptcy court. And that, of course, is a great concern to every citizen, not just here in Gardner, but in the entire region. I'm hopeful, the facts are really slim right now, so I don't want to say too much, but obviously, I think just one of many shared concerns that the hospital will survive this successfully, and will continue, be able to continue providing great service to the region that it has for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks? I will entertain a motion on the floor adjourned after the closing prayer.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Max, seconded by Counselor Boone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. All my Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of drawing deliberation and action within the course of this meeting. Blessed, O Lord, all who gather here, and the peoples who live in this town, who do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.